Hello Jesse.
Hello.
You can hear us?
You can hear us? You can hear us?
So, so it sounded like you had two, two speakers going on or something, something to feed him back.
Thank you.
Hey. Can you guys see the, can you guys see the agenda right now? Have I got that going right? Okay. Oops.
Hey Jeff.
Jeff, can you hear me? Yep, I can.
Okay, that's something screwing going on. I can see you. I don't think you can see me though, can you?
No, birthday boy, we gotta see you. It's your birthday, come on.
Hey, quit.
Oh, don't worry, I'll remind everybody.
Hey, how's that? Did I just do something right? Keith should be proud of me.
I'm not.
I don't know what you're doing right. I can't see, I, I don't know what you're so excited about Stan, I can't see anything.
Can't see me?
Uh-uh.
I can't see you.
Serious?
Nope.
What's up? Wait a minute.
There you are.
Somebody should be way proud of me for that one.
Where's, where's Mr. Scott?
He was on. I heard him a minute ago.
He on audio or, oh, there he is.
He's shy.
Alright. Well. It's almost five o'clock somewhere.
My wife's down making my birthday cake, so I couldn't go down at the table, so you guys are suffering with me upstairs.
Well, we'll have to make do. Tell Jan we'll be over for some birthday cake.
Come on over, homemade Waldorf Astoria cake.
Ooh.
Red velvet cake they call it.
Sounds good.
It is good.
Hey, oh, I just got a text, Stuart's on the phone, so, great. Alright, um, looks like we're at five o'clock, so we'll go ahead and, and, Marla, you ready? Okay, I can't hear you, but I saw your head nod, so we're good. Okay. Alright, well, we'll start off, I'll, I'll give the invocation and then we'll go from there. So. Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity which we have to be able to meet as a commission and as leaders in the community. Father, please bless us this day that we might be able to do those things which will be beneficial to the citizens of the county and be able to help move things forward as far as helping our citizens and the communities grow and progress as we plan for our children and our children's children. And Father, please bless those who are taking care of keeping us safe, our sheriff and fire departments and please guard protect them and say, serve us, please bless our militaries, those that are serving at, at home and abroad, please guard protect them as well, please bless us in this time as we are dealing with the COVID-19, that we might be able to be diligent in the things that we do, that we might be able to help one another and lift each other up in these trying times and please bless us with these things and any other things that obvious see as fit to bestow upon us at this time, and we ask for these things only in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
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 Okay, uh, looks like first off, we've got, we've got our minutes from 2015, do you guys get a chance to look those over?
Yeah, I'm making motion we approve the minutes from April 15, 2020.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Um, alright, administrative view, do you have any, anything you guys want to report?
Do you want to talk about the sighting of the buffalo today? If we couldn't have the normal stuff, do you want to go over that?
Yeah, well, you, you want to just talk about that really quick Stan? I was gonna ask Jeff if he just mentioned what the latest is with the health board and COVID-19.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll just say we went out today because they're not gonna have a celebration out to the golden spike this year, but they actually set the buffalo today, the rolling thunder. Um, so that's just one more great thing that's gonna happen out there that, um, for future use. The park people were telling us they had, what was it Jeff, between five and eight hundred people there on the weekends? I think that's what they were telling us today.
Yeah, they had eight hundred people that showed up one day last week.
Yeah, that's been a little busy for them, so, but it's good, you know, get people out and get them away from places, so. But yeah, it was a good, good ceremony, you'll watch tonight on KSL and the local papers were all there too, so.
Yeah, yeah, that bison looks pretty cool, it'll look nice when it's on the pad there. So, Jeff, do you want to talk about the, the health department stuff real quick and just let people know what the latest and hopefully greatest news is?
Yeah, we just had an update call this afternoon at noon, we've got a complete board of health call tomorrow at two, but we did pick up one new case in Box Elder, I believe it was yesterday, Cash had one new one today. We're still among the lowest in the state. Um, better than half of the cases that we have had here in our county have now recovered, and so that's great news. Um, we did move to a yellow with the, the rest of the state, uh, just this, uh, this week, or excuse me, to orange. And, uh, there's a lot of talk about moving to, to yellow, and so that will be on our call tomorrow and looking at potentially petitioning to go to a yellow for our region on May 15th. That's about the earliest that the, the state of Utah will even consider it. Uh, there's been a couple of locales that have petitioned to move to yellow immediately, and they were denied. And so, we're kind of working towards that, with Ridge County being part of the region and not having a case to date. Um, I think there's a lot of justification to go to a yellow, just continue to ask people to maintain social distancing, good uh, cleaning standards, and if, if you're in a business that serves the public, you know, just make sure that you're complying with the other health guidelines to prevent, you know, further spread, but I just really appreciate everything that's going on up here, I think for the most part, people have really done a good job, and that's the reason we don't have problems up here.
Yeah, great, thanks. Um, I just gonna tell you guys about, and just let people know, we had our economic, I guess, meeting yesterday uh, where we had myself, Mayor Friedall, Mayor Vincent, our economic, economic development planners, uh, there. Anyway, we let people, different businesses, uh, join in, just to try and share information, we let them know like the, the updates and where we're at with, uh, the PPE uh, options that they might need, and, uh, so if they needed assistance, we kind of steered them towards Mark Millet, he gave them some great information. And, uh, I, I thought it was a good, good thing, we had a few questions from a couple of businesses and how they were handling things, and it's a, it's gonna be a work in progress, but that's, that's why we wanted to have the meetings, so that we could know that the businesses uh, knew that we were here to, to reach out and, and help them in any way we can, and helping them get back on their feet and get our communities going again. So, I thought it was a productive meeting, and, and we may try and have one again when we get ready to move here to, to yellow, so, anyway. Um, any former agenda items guys, or anything else?
Hey Jeff, I did forget to talk about, uh, the first drive-in movie theater we're doing at the fairgrounds this weekend, night, so eight thirty at night, they're gonna be able to come in and social distance your cars in the parking lot on the west side. They're gonna be, um, seeing, uh, the Emperor's New Groove, you'll be able to turn in, tune into your car on a special FM station. So, you know, sit in the back of your trucks, pull up and do an old-fashioned drive-in theater and bring your snacks and everything should be fun that night. Sorry, I forgot about that one.
No, that's great, I'm glad, glad you reminded us, so.
And that's the west, uh, west parking lot, uh, at the fairgrounds?
Yeah, west parking lot at the fairgrounds, they've got a twenty by twenty screen that you're gonna hang, and then like I said, you just social distance your cars and we should be able to fit a couple hundred cars in there, so it should be a good time.
Our cars don't need to be six feet apart, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying, you better so you don't get door deez, or share popcorn.
Body shops will like that. Anyway, um, just before we move on to the, to the agenda, Steve, do you have anything?
Nope, I don't have anything.
Hey, Marla? Yeah, anything, I just wanted to make sure that maybe you guys might think we're forgetting something or whatever, so I just wanted to check with you guys too, so I appreciate you pinning in on this. Hopefully this is maybe our last time doing this, so we'll be back to normal meeting next time, so. Um, okay, with that, uh, we've got, uh, appointment of the board library. Library board there?
Sorry, Keith was telling me to turn my earbuds down, I guess I've been giving you guys a bunch of feedback, so. Is that what it is?
We're, we're just on the library board.
Okay, um, I'm making motion we appoint to the library board Heather Nelson.
And I'm assuming she's already been contacted and is okay with serving?
Yep, she is.
I would second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, that's not exactly correct. Sorry, this is Heather Nelson, I, I already worked at the, I worked for the book review.
Oh, you were supposed to come in and tell us what we're supposed to do, sorry Heather.
Robin Brager is who we were trying to appoint to the library.
Sorry Heather, I got in front of myself.
Thanks for correcting us.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion then on that.
Still moved.
And that's for, uh, Robin Brager to serve on the board?
Robin Brager.
Okay. How about I second that motion?
Hey, I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, a second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Alright, I'm glad we got the right one appointed now. Thank you Heather, appreciate that. Um, okay, and then we have, uh, David Walker, is David on?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, David, thank you for being on, go ahead.
Thank you very much for your service and for your time this evening, and I appreciate all you do. Two items on our agenda for you, if I might. Uh, there was a correction to the agenda, uh, for this request to use, it's not the county grounds, it's the South County Parking, uh, the County Courthouse Parking Lot for the farmers' market. Our fifth year of, of operating the Brigham City Farmers Market, we use the tagline that Utah's famous fruitway begins and ends at the Brigham City Farmers Market, which is literally quite true depending on the direction you're traveling on Highway eighty-nine. We've had five, uh, four good, great years, uh, we normally meet in the Bill of Rights Plaza because it's shaded and a lot more pedestrian friendly. However, the Utah Department of Ag and Foods has given some fairly strict guidance this year to be able to only have farmers' markets offering agricultural products, and they have placed in, in, uh, they have in place a number of safety measures for social distancing, as you would imagine, which includes a number of things, extra washing stations, uh, division of money handling versus, uh, handling of produce. No live music, no entertainment, no crafts, arts or entertainment of any kind. So what we've designed is a simultaneously, a drive-through and walk-through market there in the South County Courthouse Parking Lot. Similar to what we did on the very first year, two thousand sixteen, when we started the farmers' market. And, uh, I've, I've got, uh, the, a map all drawn up as to how we can keep the cars and people separated, how we can keep people moving one direction and how we can provide all the social distances and comply with all the UDAF guidelines for as long as they're in place, we're hoping that those will ease sometime during the market season, but for now, we needed to have contingency plans to operate our farmers' market, as we have again for the last four years, needed your permission to use the, uh, South County Courthouse Parking Lot. I guess that was actually agenda item number two, but.
Dave, do you know when the, uh, first anticipated, uh, weekend would be?
Yes, we are scheduled to open on June twentieth. And go, we're, we have adopted an evening format, um, for the last couple of years, it seems to work better for our farmers. And we will plan to hold our last farmers' market on September twenty-sixth, and then a one-day fall farmers' market on the third Friday of October, I can't remember what date that is, October twentieth or something like that. And, uh, in addition to that, we're asking to continue to be able to use the, uh, parking lot for our food truck event, we hold once each month on the third Friday of each month, we call it Third Friday Live, where we have food trucks, live music, and our merchants stay open late, so. That's the total of the exposure we're asking for to utilize the parking lot. I, I'll be glad to provide a written list of all those dates, uh, the city's got it right now, they're still mulling over the special event permits because they are canceling on a rolling basis all the special events permits because of the pandemic, but they've given the indication that they should, they should be able to, we should be able to do the farmers' market, so, we're still waiting up for them on that.
So it'd be from, uh, June twentieth through the fall with the exception of Peach Day's weekend?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, hopefully by June twentieth, we'll be back to, uh, some semblance of normal, that's about six weeks, so.
We're, yeah, we're certainly hopes, hoping so, but all of the other farmers' markets are doing the same thing, they're coming up with contingency plans to, uh, comply with, uh, a rather lengthy list that UDAF has come, come up with to operate.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, that's.
Did you see that thing that they just sent out?
The thing.
Sorry, did you guys just see what Brandy sent out from UAC talking about Governor Herbert's four point one now? So it's looking like we're starting to get closer to what we were just talking about with the farmers' market too, I mean, now up to fifty people in certain situations and um, so anyway, it sounds like it just comes in minute by minute and hour by hour how things are changing, so, we'll know more probably tomorrow, we'll call Jeff.
Well then, uh, we'll have more on that call on Friday with, uh, Utah Association of Counties, so. Um, I would make a motion that we approve the request to use the counties, county grounds, the specifically the South Parking Lot uh, for the farmers' market and the, uh, Third Friday Live.
Second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, let's go backwards here to the reallocation of the TAB grants.
Okay, thank you very much, I'm sorry, I got that out of order. Um, each Memorial Day weekend, we have a very, well, it's actually growing. Again, this is our fifth year, we call it Art on Main, and it's a collaborative art festival that involves all of our local arts organizations. Susan over at the Fine Arts Center, we have, uh, Amber Rust at the Photography Studio across the street from the courthouse there. We have the, um, Lester's and Salty Peach Pottery, their studio there on one hundred south doing a pottery show, we had sidewalk chalk art, we had a, um, a Brigham City, historic Brigham City plein air, uh, uh, contest scheduled, and, and then the flagship event of the Art on Main, uh, effort was the Fifth Annual Academy Center Art Show and Sale. Uh, those were all scheduled for Memorial Day weekend, and we also coincide that with the, uh, big, uh, Main Street, uh, uh, street festival and merchants, uh, sidewalk sale, et cetera, and this year, we're also going to be putting up flowers, uh, lining the Main Street with flowers starting that weekend, so it's kind of a big, big, uh, weekend for us, and we had, uh, six different organizations involved, and it's just all collapsed because of this COVID-19 restrictions. Uh, and we, we just don't have enough time now, even if they eased the restrictions, which they have not yet officially, we couldn't comply with the social distancing. And, uh, it's really not an effective venue for us to be able to do online. So what we were wondering if you would be willing to consider extending the T-Tab grant that we had last year. Last year, we did, we did a remake of our tourism-oriented website, visitbrigamcity.org, and with an emphasis on the Bird Refuge, we have sections on our website about the Bird Refuge, our local merchants, uh, Utah's famous fruitway, some of the historic preservation work that we're doing and other things, and, uh, we spent about five thousand dollars last year doing site redesign, uh, content management, uh, we've got a, a photographer and blogger that's been contributing content, uh, we've also done, uh, outreach to the city's organization, Paul Larson's indicated that they would like to participate in our website as well. So we're wondering if, uh, it would be agreeable to the, uh, commission if we utilize, uh, those funds for that purpose, since we would not be able to utilize them for the, uh, Art on Main event because of the cancellation.
Was that this year's TAB grants you're talking about?
Yes, we were just notified a couple of weeks ago that, that we are awarded five thousand dollars for the Art on Main event for Memorial Day weekend, which has been canceled.
Well, and then, you're gonna see at the end of our, we're actually doing the redistribution and probably take TAB grants back for this year because of the COVID. So, if it was still around, I, I would say yes, if we would be able to do that, but you'll see at the end of this meeting that we're actually going to send those TAB grants this year because of the COVID.
Oh, okay, I did not see that, so, that's fine.
That, that funding from the, from the hotels and, and whatnot, it's just hit everything pretty hard, so, yeah, we decided that we needed to pull that back.
No worries, okay, well, we haven't spent it yet, so, that's a good thing, sometimes we get a little ahead of ourselves, but we didn't this year, so, thank you very much, that's, that's all I have.
You're fine, thanks, thanks for all your good work David, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you David, thanks for coming on.
Alright, goodnight gentlemen, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, um, looks like we're on to, uh, Jenica, you on?
Yeah, come here, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so I have three items for you tonight, uh, the first one is similar to items that we've done before. Um, we have three employees who have requested to have an early HSA payment, so that's just gonna come two pay periods early. Um, they have a need for those payments to be made early, so that will pay out on May fifteenth if you guys approve them.
Okay, do you guys get a chance to look over those?
Yeah, it was, it was just an agenda item, it, it didn't say, you know, names or anything, but, uh, I know that we've done this in the past, and it just comes in a little early because of pressing medical bills, so.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion that we approve the, uh, two early, uh, HSA payments, uh, now instead of in Jan.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Um, the next item I have is Resolution twenty dash oh six, this is the Utah Retirement System. They've made some changes to the Tier Two Public Safety Retirement this year, starting on July first, and basically what those changes involve is a two point two seven percent increase on the retirement funding that we pay. So, um, the proposal from URS was you can either push that payment onto the employees and they can contribute that two point two seven percent, or we as the county can pick that up and then pay it on their behalf, so. Uh, this resolution proposes that we pick up their two point two seven percent, um, reduce the ten point two one percent that we've been paying that was budgeted for twenty twenty into their 401K and then make them whole still with the Tier One Public Safety employees.
I like that idea Jenica, when you brought that up, so, yeah, I think that's what we should do. You got any, you guys?
Really turn it from being more of a defined contribution to more of a defined benefit by doing it that direction.
Yeah.
It's, it's budget neutral for the county, it just helps the employees because they don't have to, uh, worry about paying taxes on that if I remember right, at least upfront.
Right.
Okay.
Great.
I'd make a mo, I'd make, I'd make a motion to approve the URS Tier Two Public Safety Resolution twenty dash oh six.
Is it thirty, or is it twenty? It says thirty on here.
Did I lift?
Twenty, isn't it?
It says twenty on mine.
Okay, on the agenda on the screen, it says thirty, but it should be twenty, cause that's kind of the year, isn't it?
It's, yeah, it says, it's just twenty on the board doc, so.
I'm going off, I'm going off of.
What is it, Marla, twenty or thirty?
I'm guessing it's twenty because it's done by year and then the resolution, so, okay, I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, and then the final change I have today is, uh, making a change to Policy Four. Um, as the sheriff's office has been going through some policy changes in their department, we realized that we didn't have a Veterans Preference Policy. So we basically pushed all of Policy Four from four point two down and made a new four point two for Veterans Preference. And that wording comes straight from the state code, so it just gives them preference if they apply for a job.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good. Glad you got that in there, you guys have any comment on that?
Uh, effective date, just as soon as it's passed?
Yeah, it'll go effective tonight.
Alright, yeah, I would make a motion that we approve the, uh, Policy Four changes regarding veterans' preference for, uh, applying for Box Elder County, uh, job. for, uh, applying for Boxer County, uh, job openings.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jenica. Um, looks like Scott Lyons, you, you on Scott? I hope Scott's on. He's got quite a bit on the agenda.
Are we early or late?
Okay, sorry, I was muted.
Well, there we go. Good. Good to have you.
I think Keith's trying to lock me out. Uh, all right, my first item, John Capener subdivision. This is a one lot subdivision located at 16, 416 North, 6,000 West. Um, so this would be just up, just a little bit, uh, north of Riverside. It's one lot, it's one acre in size, it, uh, meets all the zoning requirements. It's been reviewed and approved by all applicable staff and, uh, comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
Yes, I need to unmute. I'd make a motion that we approve the John Capener, uh, one lot subdivision.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, my next item is the Gatlin and Kimber Lear subdivision. This as well is a one lot subdivision. This one is 0.84 acres in size. It's located at, um, 44, 48 West, 14, 800 North. So this one's up in the, uh, East Garland area. Um, this one as well has been reviewed by all applicable staff and comes with a recommendation of approval.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Gatlin and Kimber Lear subdivision Lot One.
I'll second that.
I have motion by Commissioner Summers, second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next one is the Dylan Haslam subdivision. Uh, this one is a one lot subdivision also. It is 0.51 acres in size. Uh, this one is located at 45, 10 West, 14, 400 North. Um, and this one also has been reviewed and approved by all applicable county departments and comes with a recommendation of approval.
I'd make a motion that we approve the Dylan Haslam subdivision.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the GDK 8,800 North Small Subdivision. Uh, this one is a one lot subdivision as well. It's 0.761 acres in size. Uh, it's located at 68, 65 West, 8,800 North. Um, this one has been reviewed and approved by all applicable county departments and comes with a recommendation of approval.
Okay, I'd make a motion, we approve the GDK 8,800 North Small Subdivision, one lot.
I'll second that.
I have motion by Commissioner Summers, second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next one is the Brookside Ranches Subdivision Phase One. This one is located in the East Garland area, um, at 13, 500 North and accesses off, um, 4,400 West, they're also known as East Garland Road. Uh, this is a Phase One. Phase One consists of 18 lots. Um, and there will be a Phase Two of 12 lots once more water is available. Uh, so this Phase One has been through the Planning Commission. Planning Commission, um, has approved it. Um, the Planning Commission did approve it with, uh, several conditions at the time. All of those conditions have been resolved. There are two conditions essentially that come into, um, your approval and, uh, should be included in your motion. Um, those, those two conditions address a temporary access and as well a bridge width. Um, so to give a little more background on this, the, the, to access the subdivision, you would leave East Garland Road heading east, you would have to cross over the Bear River Canal Company's canal there. And that's where the new road is located, 13, 500 North, um, leading to another road called Brookside Drive. So that, that bridge, the Planning Commission approved it, um, as a 35 foot wide bridge, the developer's proposing a 30 foot wide bridge. Um, and the, the developer's bridge design meets ASHTO standards. Um, and the developer has also submitted a letter from his attorney who was previously the property rights ombudsman for the state, um, basically describing, um, kind of their stance as far as bridge width requirements. The, the reason we're kind of in this, um, predicament is the county doesn't have any adopted bridge standards. So we have clear road standards in our, um, land use code that have been adopted. We do not have any bridge standards if a, it, for a scenario like this where, um, a developer or someone is going to build a bridge and then dedicate it to the county. Um, so with that being said, I spoke with the property rights ombudsman, uh, and, uh, or at least his, his office, um, and they said, well, where you don't have a strict, um, standard with regard to bridges, then you need to essentially give the developer, um, or the landowner the, the benefit in that particular scenario. Um, unless you can justify a particular width, uh, based on the safety or, um, some other major factor like that. Uh, so when the developer's attorney wrote us a letter, his letter basically outlined a couple of sections of state code uh, that kind of backed up essentially what the ombudsman's office had said. Um, and where the, the developer's bridge proposal does meet ASHTO standards, which is, um, an accepted and acknowledged standard by the County Roads Department. Um, in talking with, um, Steve on this, our opinion is to recommend, uh, approval based on the design that the developer is proposing, that the 30 foot bridge width. So I don't know if there are any questions regarding that.
No.
You kind of said you want us to make, make that motion, so.
So I, I would just.
Scott, do you, do you want to, do you want to put that in?
Yeah, not a problem.
We know. Okay.
Yeah, I, I spoke with Scott about this earlier today. Now, if I remember right, they have until, uh, a year from now. So within 12 months, they have to have the bridge in, but they can't start construction on that until after the water's out of the canal this fall. Is that correct?
Correct, and that was the second, um, condition coming from the Planning Commission is that, uh, they would have that bridge in within 12 months. Uh, that would give them, once the canal shuts the water off in the late fall, that would give them late fall through early spring to get that bridge put in place and have the county engineer and roads department inspect it and accept it prior to it being officially, um, dedicated to the county. So, and the, the Planning Commission said if something like a, uh, you know, very odd snow or rain year hit us and made it impossible to install that bridge, then the applicant could come back and request an additional year. But, um, they wanted to see it done within the next year, put in place. So that was included in their motion, and I think that along with the, whatever bridge width you choose to approve be included in your motion as well.
Okay.
And can I, one, one more thing I can jump in on. Um, as you're the final approving body, you would be approving the subdivision as well as the subdivision improvement agreement and escrow agreement. Um, basically, the subdivision improvement agreement ensures that the improvements are put in, um, to county standards and, uh, that there, uh, a security is put in place. So if there's any issue with those improvements and the installation of those improvements, that the county can draw from that escrow to, um, correct them, uh, as needed or to put them in. Um, for example, if the developer jumped ship or, uh, something like that. So those two, those two agreements would need to be included in the motion as well.
Okay, Scott, maybe you mentioned this before, but how many, how many, uh, how many lots are in this subdivision then? Do you remember?
Eighteen.
Yeah, Phase One there, 18.
18, okay. All right.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna need a little assistance here with this.
I'm having you do it.
Brookside Ranches Subdivision Phase One, uh, as well as the developer's, uh, agreement and the escrow agreement. Is that the two items?
Correct.
Uh, with the stipulation as outlined in the Planning Commission, that they need to construct the, uh, bridge as an access road over the canal within 12 months, and that that bridge be 30 feet wide rather than the 35 that was recommended. How'd we do?
Did we get that right?
Yeah.
I think, I think we're good. Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next one, Agreement 20 dash 32. This is an agreement between Boxer County and UDOT. Um, as you're aware, uh, late fall, we got a grant through UDOT to update our general plan. Um, that grant provides us with an $85,000 match to our $15,000. Um, this agreement essentially outlines the, uh, conveyance of those funds um, and, and, uh, our use of those, so.
That's great work, Scott, and then.
Yeah, this is awesome.
Oh, go ahead.
No, this is, this is great. Um, UDOT's had this out there, and I think this is a great partnership, especially with, uh, the work that we've done in the past with our resource management plan, corridor preservation, um, just everything that we've done. Uh, the water plan that will kind of lead up to this and really help fill in the gaps and make this a, a good solid general plan. So we appreciate you going after this and.
With the transportation plan, the drainage plan and everything else, it should get everything up to date. So thanks, Scott, for everything you do. That's awesome, especially if it didn't cost us, you know, like you said, a hundred plus thousand dollars to get it done either, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'd make a motion that we approve Agreement 20 dash 32 with UDOT update with the Boxer County General Plan.
I'll second that.
I have motion by Commissioner Summers, a second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, Scott, what's the timeframe on when these funds will be available and we'd be able to send this out for, uh, an RFP to, uh, to do the plan?
Uh, now that this agreement's officially taken care of, we can get in touch with UDOT and get the RFP process started and the funds transferred.
Great, great.
Okay. Okay, the next item is a corridor preservation fund request. Um, this is, um, we have it as application CPF 19 dash 07. This is Tremonton City requesting funds on their 1650 West Main Street Intersection Project. Um, so that project, uh, came in, it was originally approved at $200,000. Um, and I think they do have one small slice of land still to, uh, to acquire. But this request is for, um, a couple of other parcels. And their total request is 175,238 dollars and 97 cents. Um, this was originally approved by the COG on October 7th, 2019. Subsequently approved by the Boxer County Commission on October 16th, 2019. So essentially, this is just, um, would be the approval of the dispersment of those funds to Tremonton City for the professional services incurred in, in acquiring those lands and to American Secure Title for the, um, purchase of the land itself, so.
Okay, very good. I'd make a motion that we approve, uh, Corridor Preservation Fund Request 19 dash 07 for Tremonton City, 1650 West Main.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right, my last item, and then I'll get out of your hair. So this one is, uh, Resolution 20 dash 05. Um, this is a resolution of the Boxer County Planning Commission to establish a policy governing the calling and holding of electronic meetings by the Boxer County Planning Commission. So, uh, very similar, in fact, we used the county commission's, um, electronic meeting policy as a template for this policy. Um, and this went before the Planning Commission at their last meeting, um, would have been April 16th. And they, they, uh, had seven members present and all seven members voted in favor, so it passed unanimously. Um, their request is that the county commission approve the resolution, um, as well. So the Planning Commission can continue to hold those electronic meetings as needed.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution 20 dash 05 Planning Commission Electronic Meeting Policy.
I'll second that.
I have motion by Commissioner Summers, second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, you guys.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
Yep.
Hey, looks like we're moving on to the, uh, TAB grants, um, or I guess the, the lack thereof. Uh, due to the, what we mentioned before when we talked with David Walker, um, with COVID-19, it's taken toll on our taxes that we normally get in from that. And therefore, we've, uh, made this decision that we won't, uh, give out any TAB grants this year based on that, and we'll just kind of have to evaluate and see how things are later on. But, uh, right now, um, that's, that's what we're going to do. You guys have any comments or want to make, discuss anything on that?
I am a little bit concerned about a couple of the, uh, grant recipients. Uh, I have heard from at least one that, uh, they will really struggle with their event uh, that still is going to go forward, uh, just because they, uh, received the, um, response that they thought the grant was going to be awarded. And so they've already committed to the event and they've secured other funding from another, uh, source to go with it to, uh, continue paying for it, and without this, uh, it puts them in a pretty serious bind. It sounded like they'd already, um, committed some of the funds and have actually, um, they've already done work on it that they're going to have to pay for one way or another, and so this puts them in, in kind of a rough spot.
You know about how much they're going to be out?
I would have to check for sure. I talked with Joan today, um, just, you know, while I was on the road, and I think it was either 10 or $15,000 was their grant, uh, amount. So it was, you know, it was a substantial amount. I think a lot of the, uh, grant recipients, uh, it was for events that, uh, that won't be happening. And so it's not that they couldn't have used it on other things, but it wasn't allocated for that. And so since they're not happening, it won't be as big of a deal, but since it is happening, it, it puts them in a tough, tough spot.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I don't have a problem with doing like you just said, maybe do them one by one. If necessary, if they can come up with those type of things that you just talked about, Jeff, that, you know, if it puts them in a tight spot and their event is happening. Because like I said, I think we rescinded it, you know, based on the taxes that are coming in and then they won't happen. Um, and the events won't happen anyway, so maybe we should, uh, you know, talk about that and decide if we can do one by one.
Yeah, I, I think for today, what we may want to do is we need to give Joan some direction because. we need to give Joan some direction because these folks are, are waiting to know for sure, and many of them are expecting the funding, thinking that they've already received it uh, before this, you know, all, all happened, and so.
Uh, this is Joan. I think that we'll also need to um, check in with the Tourism Tax Advisory Board. Um, and, and kind of, you know, make sure that they're in on, on whatever, whatever planning we decide to, we decide to do with this, so I just wanted to make sure we kept that in mind as we move forward as well.
Well, I think too, if, if, if uh, when you send that information out Joan, if we kind of specify that right now, this is what we've decided, but it's obviously with COVID nineteen, things are still somewhat fluid and and we might be able to address or take a look at some of these things depending, we'll just kind of have to see how things go.
Well, and y'all know that I'm the biggest optimist, so in my world, by the end of the summer, we're looking pretty good, so.
We hope you're right.
Me too.
Yeah, I, I guess what I would do is I would make the motion that we suspend the grants at this point. And have staff get in contact with the uh, grant, the folks that requested the grants. Tell them that they have been suspended at this point. And that we're having the uh, Tourism Advisory Board review those and uh, see what can be done in the meantime.
Yeah, I don't think I'll send out um, letters tonight, I think I will wait and maybe we can circle in the morning and kind of, you know, see what the best, what the best route is and bring in the board and, and see what we can do.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks Joan.
Thank you.
Okay, um, it looks like here, uh, our next item here B is uh, to amend a motion we did back in February. And apparently I was unaware of this, this was brought to my attention as, after we visited with the Steve and Marla. That when we did the contract twenty eleven uh, with recycled earth, I believe that we'd stated it was Allos instead of recycled earth, and so um, we needed to, to make that correction, so we put it back on the agenda here to make sure that it gets, gets right, so. You guys have anything else you want to add to it?
No.
Nope. I'd make a motion, we amend um, contract twenty dash eleven from February with recycled earth.
I'd second that.
Okay, I have motion by Commissioner Summers, second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alright, um, I believe we probably ought to move into our RDA meeting at this point. If we give Marla a second to, to switch things over. You can give us a thumbs up if you're on mute when you're ready, so you're ready? Okay. Alright, so let me pull mine up here. Unless Keith can get us to the next slide, oh, there we go. Perfect.
There you go.
Okay. What, what would we do without Keith? Alright.
You don't want to know.
The minutes.
I did. Yeah, I'd make a motion that we approve the minutes from our RDA meeting on April fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Scott and a second, second by Commissioner Summers to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We do have, uh, I believe Stuart, I don't know if Keith can unmute him or not, Stuart said he uh, he didn't know how to unmute himself, but Stuart Clayson's also online, I think Mitch, is Mitch on?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, do you want to speak to this really briefly Mitch, tell us details on it?
Sure, what we have are two different uh, participation agreements. Uh, they're, they're theoretically, the, they're different, but they're the same. Uh, ones for Rocket Solar LLC and the other ones for Steel Solar LLC, uh, they're both twenty-year agreements. Fifty-seven percent will go to the developer of the tax increment off the project, ten percent to housing, three percent for admin and thirty percent to the taxing entities for both of those uh, participation agreements. This would complete that project area, the, both those project areas, I should say.
Okay. Um, yeah, and they're, they're both practically identical then, as far as the contracts.
And I, Utah Association of Counties has hired a Kyle Field, Kyle Fielding, uh, McDonald Fielding attorney to uh, review these, and I think Steve, you've had a chance to take a look at him as well, and um, anyway, so I think from an attorney standpoint, we're good to go too.
Yep, that's right.
Okay, great, well, uh, I'd entertain a motion on the first item, item A.
Um, I'd make a motion, uh, we approve the participation agreement between Box Elder County Redevelopment Agency and Rocket Solar LLC contract twenty thirteen.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then on B.
Exact same agreement, just different project. I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve the participation agreement between Box Elder County RDA and Steel Solar LLC contract number twenty dash fourteen.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great. Yeah, thank you Mitch.
I'd make a motion during our RDA meeting.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Scott, second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and while Marla's switching us back to our regular commission meeting, I just want to wish you a happy birthday to Commissioner Summers. Fifty-five years young.
Yep, at least I'm not the oldest one on the phone call. Steve just scratched his chin, so.
Anyway, I hope you're having a good one.
Thanks guys. It's been good.
I guess we got warrant register, I, I looked that over, we'll, we'll just need to come in and sign that with you, Marla. Okay.
Do we need to make a formal motion on the warrant register and the personnel actions?
Yeah, you should.
Yes.
Alright, I'd make a motion that we approve the uh, warrant register and the personnel actions for our uh, May sixth, twenty twenty meeting.
Second.
I have motion by Commissioner Summers, or Commissioner Scott, excuse me, a second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, do we need a closed session, Jenica or Steve, do you guys have anything?
Nope.
I don't have anything either.
Okay.
I'm good.
Well.
I'll make a motion to adjourn for my birthday cake.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, a second by Commissioner Scott, all in favor. Aye.
Aye. Thank you guys, have a good night.
Talk to you later.
Thank you guys.
Happy birthday.
Thanks Keith, thanks Marla, thanks you guys.
Thanks guys.